This is the third Tuesday in the month Wapaka City Council meeting.
Couple of minutes behind here, but we have a notice of a public hearing and this is for a ordinance amending Chapter 17 of the zoning code. Today is Wednesday, February 17, 2016, and it is 5:53 PM and I call this public hearing to order. Sandy will take a roll.
Brian Smith.
Here.
Steve Hackett.
Here.
Lori Chestnut.
Here.
Paul Hagan.
Here.
Alan Keeland.
Here.
Scott Pritchardski.
Here.
Dave Peterson.
Here.
Paul Mayo.
Here.
Chuck Whitman.
Here.
Gillian Peterson. And Eric Olson.
Here.
Nine present, we have a quorum.
And Sandy, would you at least summarize the purpose of the hearing tonight?
Notice is hereby given that the Common Council of the City of Wapaka will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, February 17, 2016 at 5:50 PM in the council chambers of City Hall, 111 South Main Street, Wapaka, Wisconsin, to hear testimony and whether to change language in Chapter 17 of the municipal code zoning ordinance to create 17.220, parent one, parent B, eight, R1, single-family residence district. Use is permitted by right, keeping of chickens allowed with permit. 17.220, parent two, parent B, six, R2, two-family residence district, use is permitted by right, keeping of chickens allowed with permit. And 17.370, keeping of chickens in R1 and R2 districts. The hearing will be for the purpose of giving an opportunity for any person interested, their attorneys or agents to be heard, and a copy of the proposed changes may be obtained from the City of Wapaka Community and Economic Development Office, signed by Henry Velicker and published January 28th and February 4th, 2016.
All right. Thank you, Sandy. At this time then, we would take testimony. If anybody would like to speak in favor of this ordinance amendment, please give your name and address for the record and limit your discussion to three minutes or less. Anybody that would like to give testimony in favor? Hearing none, we would entertain testimony in opposition. Any testimony in opposition to the zoning code change dealing with chickens?
I have one thing, Brian. I read the ordinance. I just think, well Chuck Whitman, 319 South Horton Street. I like the ordinance, but it seems a little restrictive with the fees on there and all the things you have to go through, asking all the neighbors. It seems like that is more restrictive than if somebody has a fire pit that disturbs more than just your neighbors and, you know, as I read the ordinance, and the fees are quite excessive if you ask me for just having five chickens.
Okay.
That seems to be a little high in my mind, so.
Okay. So your opposition to it is the cost to be able to have chickens on their property and also the requirements that they get the neighbors permission?
Yes.
Okay.
I would be in favor of Chuck's.
We're still in testimony, so can you give your name?
Okay, Lori Chestnut, 650 West Union Street, Wapaka, Wisconsin, 54981.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I would be in opposition also for the same reasons that Chuck mentioned. It's very restrictive for five chickens.
Okay. Anybody else have any testimony in opposition? We had no testimony in favor, so we'll skip that. Chuck or Lori, do you have anything that you would like to add to what you just said?
I'd just like to add, I would like to see an ordinance come through for chickens. I think it would be a good idea if somebody has the big enough yard and things like that to have chickens. It is a good idea, but just the stipulations of the ordinance, in my opinion, are just a little excessive. Otherwise, it is a good idea.
Okay.
And I, do I need to say my name again?
No.
No. Okay. I would agree that the stipulations maybe needed to be looked at a little more before we would move forward with it because it is really extensive for five chickens.
Okay. All right. Council members have heard what you said, so we'll be discussing that later in our regular council meeting. Any other rebuttal in opposition? Hearing none, I declare this hearing closed at 5:59 PM. Let's move on to the next public hearing that we have. This is a ordinance amending, okay. An ordinance amending the City of Wapaka Year 2030 Comprehensive Plan. This has to do with the Preferred Land Use Map 8-43. I call this meeting to order. In attendance, I'll take a roll again.
Sure.
Thank you.
Brian Smith.
Here.
Steve Hackett.
Here.
Lori Chestnut.
Here.
Paul Hagan.
Here.
Alan Keeland.
Here.
Scott Pritchardski.
Here.
Dave Peterson.
Here.
Paul Mayo.
Here.
Chuck Whitman.
Here.
Gillian Peterson. And Eric Olson.
Here.
Nine present, we have a quorum.
So again, at this time, we would take testimony in favor of the changes to this amendment, amendment to our ordinance. If you'd like to, please step up to the podium, give your name and address for the record, limit your discussion to three minutes or less. Anybody that would like to give testimony in favor? Seeing none, testimony in opposition, same thing, name and address, three minutes or less. Anybody that would like to give testimony in opposition to this amendment to the ordinance having to do with the comprehensive plan? Again, seeing none, I declare this hearing closed at 6:01 PM. Okay. Next up then is the regular city council meeting. Welcome everybody to tonight's regular scheduled city council meeting. Today is Wednesday, February 17, 2016, and it is 6:02 PM. I call this meeting to order and we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we'll ask Sandy to read the clerk's open meeting statement for us.
This meeting and all other meetings of the Common Council are open to the public. Proper notice has been posted and given to the press in accordance with Wisconsin state statutes, so the citizens may be aware of the time, place, and agenda of this meeting.
Thanks Sandy, and would you also take a roll for us?
Brian Smith.
Here.
Steve Hackett.
Here.
Lori Chestnut.
Here.
Paul Hagan.
Here.
Alan Keeland.
Here.
Scott Pritchardski.
Here.
Dave Peterson.
Here.
Paul Mayo.
Here.
Chuck Whitman.
Here.
Gillian Peterson. And Eric Olson.
Here.
Nine present, we have a quorum.
First item to discuss is the consent agenda. We have one addition?
Yes.
Okay.
Under letter A, monthly reports, number one, the finance director's financial report was emailed, and that was it.
Thank you, Sandy. So with that one addition, is there a motion or is there any items that council members or staff for that matter would like to see move from the consent agenda where we vote on all of these items that are under the consent agenda with one motion and one vote? Anybody that'd like to see anything moved? Move to accept?
Second.
Motion by Keeland, second by Hackett, that we approve the consent agenda with that one addition. Discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried. Under the regular agenda, it is as printed, there are no additional items on there. Council, if we're okay with the order of it, I would ask that we approve the agenda as printed.
No move, second.
Motion by Peterson, second by Hagan, that we approve the agenda as printed. Discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried. Announcements, we have a thank you letter, which is just informational, it's on page 142 of your packet. It's a thank you from the State of Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources, informational reasons only. Public input, if we have anybody that would like to give us some public input, these are, we set this aside for non-agenda items. If there's anybody that would like to talk to us on a non-agenda item, again, please step up to the podium, give your name and address, and limit your discussion on this to five minutes or less. Any public input? All right, let's move on then to the department. This is the second meeting of the month, although it's really our first meeting of the month because of our snow date, but this is where we give our department heads the opportunity to tell us what's going on in their department. So Kathy, we'll start with you.
Good evening, Mayor Smith and council members. My item is on page seven of the packet and I don't have anything to add, other than the training that I had in Milwaukee at the Horton Group on the family medical leave and Americans with Disability Act and workers' compensation claims was very informative. And like I said in my memo, we will be bringing back some policies this year in updating the employee handbook, so look for some more stuff to come from my office. That's all I have.
Thank you, Kathy. Next then, we have the library. Peg?
Thank you, Mayor Smith. I am working on the annual report to be submitted to the state early next month, so I'm busy with that. At the library, we're very busy. We have a prom dress swap, February 27, and that's for anybody who doesn't have the money to buy a dress and needs to find one at the library, and we are taking donations up until that point. We have our Every Thursday, February series with our film, our expert, Jack Rhodes, and that's 1:30 every Thursday, and tomorrow we're watching a western, The Man Who Killed Liberty Valance. In addition to that, we have one the final Thursday of the month, and then again the first Thursday in March, so lots of movies at the library. In March, we are going to be celebrating Women's Hurstery Story, History Month, so Her Story Month, and we have yoga every Friday for all genders. We have a film about gender stereotypes. We have lots of other activities happening, including a book discussion, so all of that information is on our website and at the library. Our Rotary exhibit wraps up this Saturday, and we'll have our Youth Art Month exhibit after that. We're gearing up for author Gordon Corman to visit the community on March 1st, and we do have tax forms and instructions for people who are looking for some outlet for those. We also have the Idita Read starting next month, where our young readers are reading along with the mushers in Alaska as they have that great race, the Idita Rod. And that's about it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Thanks for the information. Next then, we have Development Director Brennan.
Thanks, Mayor, and members of council. My report, I believe, is on page 24. A lot of those agenda items are going to be discussed tonight during the council meeting, but I just did want to plug the arts summit that we have coming up here on March 10 again at the A.O. House, along with the Wapaka Chamber and the Wapaka Area Community Arts Board. We're putting on the art summit from 3:00 to 8:00 PM. You can register online at the Wapaka Chamber website, and there's also links off the city's Facebook page, but looking forward to that. Henry and I have been, the rest of the committee has been working on getting some great speakers in here for that meeting from the State of Wisconsin and a couple other municipalities, talking about collaboration and the arts, so looking forward to that.
Awesome. Thanks Brennan. Yeah, if you're able to attend that art summit, that would be wonderful. This is actually our second summit we had, I can't remember how many years ago it was, but five years ago, so council members, try to put that on your calendar. Let's move on to public works then, Justin.
Thank you, Mayor Smith. My update can be found on page 25 and 26. Mostly routine stuff, I'll hit on just kind of the high notes or the important aspects. In the wastewater treatment plant, we did purchase and install a new polymer make-down unit, which I mentioned before, a piece of equipment just under $4,000. We're saving, we're using about half of the polymer chemical that we typically use in a month, so the crew there anticipates that we should be saving about $6,000 a year just on our polymer, so that piece of equipment should pay off for itself within a year. Talked about corrosion control in the past, we've got quite a bit of information together. I should be bringing something forward to you guys shortly, hopefully in April. Our aeration blower project, which I've mentioned in the past, that was the one with the Focus on Energy, we're hoping to get $14,000 from Focus. Got a piece of paper saying that we can eligible up to $19,000 for the project, so good thanks for that project. And again, looking, probably bring that forward to you next month. Street side of it, outside of the routine, we've done a lot of inventory on our streetlights. We're conjuring up some ideas, trying to save some money on that, so again, something I'm going to be bringing forward to you guys, hopefully within the next few months. Water department, just working on our year-end reports for the DNR and the PSC. Loop project, the DNR did publish our score, we did not score as well as I hoped, so I'm working on trying to get some of our points back, and again, I'll probably be bringing that project or more information about that project the next meeting. Facility side, working on the City Hall renovation project. We got some additional quotes for the HVAC system, looks much, much better pricing, something that I believe Henry will be bringing forward in a few months as well. And we did get a grant from East Central Wisconsin Planning Commission to get a tree canopy study. That's it.
Okay. Thanks, Justin. Paul?
Yeah, I noticed that we have an LED streetlight on Lake Street. Are we going to be getting more of those?
We're hoping to. With the whole streetlight inventory, we're looking at a number of things. We're looking at trying to move some, trying to look to update our policy on spacing, and yes, we're also trying to update the LEDs to save money.
Excellent.
Okay. Thank you.
Paul.
Justin, thank you. Parks and Rec, Aaron?
Thank you, Mayor. My report is on page 10 of your packet, I'll touch on a few other things. We are opening up an active net to the public, will be on the breakfast show tomorrow with WDUX announcing that people can start going on and creating their accounts now. We'll open it up for registrations and rentals on March 7. Winter rec fest was this past weekend, and attendance was down because of the temperatures. It was pretty cold out there. I do want to thank alderman Hagan, who I saw at the event. It's always nice seeing any alderman at the event, that's great to see, so I appreciate that. Also want to thank Adventure Outfitters, Faith Community Church for their partnership, and I do want to thank the Public Works Department who helped plow and get everything set up for that day, so that was fantastic. We did have more people filing for the fireworks, and I think we got a lot of good comments on those, so I think it went well considering the weather. We are going out for bid with a boat ramp, we were going to do it about two Fridays ago, but we are, we just completed the document and it will go out tomorrow. We will likely have that work done after September 5, and that's after talking to a few departments that have done these boat ramps in the past. We obviously have most of our traffic in the summer months, and we're looking to not negatively impact any fishermen or anyone that's going to use that. Adult leagues, I do want to put, kind of give some credit to Andrew Whitman, our recreation coordinator. We got two new adult leagues that have started, one cornhole league and one pickleball league. If you don't know what cornhole is, or if you're wondering what the heck I'm talking about, it's bags. You've probably seen people toss beanbags, and we've got eight teams in each, so that is the third one in less, in a couple of years, third league successfully that he has started, the other one being kickball. So those started last week and went very well. We also have a trivia night coming up Friday, March 11. This will be our second time doing that in two years. Rocky Mondello has agreed to do it, he kind of sets it up like he does at the harbor, but more family-friendly topics, so we're looking forward to that as well. And that's about all I have to add to my report, Mayor.
Thank you, Aaron.
Thank you.
Yeah, the fireworks are very nice. It's actually kind of nice without the leaves on the trees, you can sit at home and watch them, so yeah.
Beautiful.
Thank you. Chief Koch?
We had a number of calls about gunshots being.
Well, it's good that our people.
Fireworks just aren't expected in the middle of winter, and unusual for them, but it wasn't anything serious. Thanks, Mayor. Outside of my normal packet, my normal report that's in the packet, we've had two officers involved in work-related injuries over the last month or so. One was off for two weeks, he's back on duty. The other one has had to undergo surgery, and he's going to be off for several months. We'll probably get him back on light duty within short order, but we will be down one person for regular duty. Outside of that, nothing out of the ordinary.
All right. Thank you, Chief. And Henry?
Thanks, Mayor. My report's on page 27. I guess I was going to piggyback a little bit onto Brennan's comment about the art summit, he sort of stole my thunder on that, but I guess to give, maybe for the audience more so than a council, because it was mentioned in my report, that I think the city needs to pay attention to this part of our economy. It's a $535 million industry in the state of Wisconsin that produces 65 million in state and local tax revenue, and employs about 23,000 people, and creates about 479 million in resident income, so it's, I think, a real area that's ripe for some continued focus, and so I'm looking forward to that summit, and I hope you can attend. And then the last point I wanted to make is our election. I think we had a pretty decent turnout, we had over 400 voters and we tickled 16%.
15 and a half percent.
15 and a half.
473 voters.
And I haven't heard what the statewide voter turnout was, but we believe, I think they were projecting 10%, so I believe we exceeded that, so city voters came out for that primary. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Thanks, Henry. Let's move on then to new business. We have the TIF District's Financial Analysis presentation by our consultants, Ellers Municipal Advisors. Kathy, you want to set it out for us?
Sure. In July, the city engaged Ellers and Associates to provide an analysis of the city's TIF tax incremental increment districts, TIDS, to assist in future budgets, provide direction for future development, and help in educating the elected officials and the public on the status of the city's districts. After working with Brennan and the Ellers team, we have a presentation ready for council. This analysis does not require council action at this date, however, it's going to be used as a tool to assist the council in making a decision on future action requests from staff in relation to the TIDS, the city's debt policy, future development agreements, and capital planning for the next five to 20 years.
Thank you.
Phil Kossen, who is the Senior Municipal Advisor Director, is here from Ellers and Associates, and he will be presenting PowerPoint analysis and then open it up for questions from the council.
All right. Thank you. Good evening. Phil Kossen with Ellers, and it's nice to be here with you tonight, and first of all, I appreciate not coming two weeks ago and fighting the snow. I think Henry sent me an email saying that it was canceled anyhow, but we are in touch with Kathy and Brennan at the same time, so what was just handed out to you is a supplemental, so for those of you that love numbers, raise your hand, I'm one of them, that love numbers, all the supplemental information is in there, that back up the PowerPoint, and so our goal here today was really to spend time on the PowerPoint, which is kind of more high level, give you a feel for what's going on with the tax increment districts, and then we can certainly talk about the items that are in the second packet that Brennan just handed out, but some people are numbers people, some are not. I find that you lose people pretty quickly if you start paging through a bunch of numbers, so our goal today is just kind of high level, and then certainly with questions after that. Maybe I'll give a very, I'll give you the Reader's Digest version of who we are, for those who don't know, and I won't bore you with this, trust me. We're a municipal advisor, I work out of our Pewaki office, we have offices in the upper Midwest, Illinois, Wisconsin, we're a Minnesota-based company, and we also have an office in Colorado, and our role with our municipal clients are similar to what Bear does here, and that is, we are issuers of debt on behalf of municipalities, but a great deal of our business is economic development and tax increment financing. On a 10-year history, if you look at it, we've either created or amended about a third of the districts in the state of Wisconsin, so each year, about a third of them that we do. So we have a lot of experience and understanding of the tax increment law, we get involved in legislation, and we get involved in a lot of the lobbying that happens behind the scenes for economic development in the state, and so we were asked to come in and look at the tax increment districts here. I know there's been a source of probably some discussion and controversy at times, and the good news, I'll start with, is that I think you're coming out of it. The good news is that you're going to have some situation where you're going to start seeing some returns on the tax increment districts, so I don't want to steal the thunder and lead, go right to the end line, but there is some good news on the horizon, and I wanted to share that with you. As you can see in the background, and Kathy just talked about this, we were really engaged in '15, and probably early on in '15, I remember being here when it was really warm, so I was thinking summertime, and we started working on putting this together. There's been a lot of moving parts, when you have this many districts and you have a lot of different developments that are hanging out there where you have agreements, and I want to thank Henry, Brennan, and Kathy for their assistance in helping us pull together all the information as well. So really, the intent was to seek out our viewpoint and look at a couple of things. One, the city's overall use of TIF. I have some statistics for you a little bit, better understanding of the options available to you. You've already gone down the path of revenue sharing, distressing, you've done a lot of those things already. I don't think there's a lot that is needed going forward, but we'll get into that. Again, using information from the city, we created really a baseline financial profile for each one of the tax increment districts, really as of 1115. Why 1115? It's, everything's based on what comes out in August, the equalized valuation numbers and the TIF numbers come out in August, and so that falls back to 11 of the year, so that's the most recent information at this point. We have some recommendations as to kind of the, what we see are good practice and policies for you going forward, and then ultimately wanted to present this to you tonight. So some of the goals and objectives, again, was to establish a baseline for each of the eight districts that you have, give you a financial status report on each one, again, opportunities and constraints. We'll talk a little bit about potential dates for TID closures, because ultimately, the other taxing bodies are looking for that, they want to make sure that you're being prudent in use of TIF, and two, in the potential closure for the districts, so that they benefit from the development that has occurred as well. Talk a little bit about future amendments or creations, which there's really nothing on the horizon, maybe an amendment, and then we could talk a little bit more about revenue sharing and the half-mile radius amendment that took place. In addition to that, we make a few recommendations as to a couple of items. One, recommendations of best practices, leveraging existing staff resources to build off of what's been currently done, and then best practice regarding charging administrative costs for staff time to the TIF districts. We'll get back to that one, because I think that's an area that you'll see that we are tweaking what you've done in the past going forward. In addition to that, a couple of objectives, we think that a municipality needs to treat tax increment districts like an enterprise fund, similar to how you treat water, sewer, stormwater, if you have a stormwater utility, where you do some long-term planning, some coordination between your staff from finance to economic. fund, similar to how you treat water, sewer, stormwater, if you have a stormwater utility, where you do some long-term planning, some coordination between your, your staff from finance to economic development to public works, et cetera. So you have kind of a coordination between all the departments and then prepare an annual budget based on the planning that has occurred throughout the year. And ultimately, what's going to happen is that one of the law changes to the tax, the tax increment districts is that you're going to have a beefed-up reporting requirement to the other taxing bodies, so that there's going to be more than just a simple annual report. Right now, you might be providing them with your audit and maybe a little baseline information. Ironically, there's going to be a report requirement that hasn't been developed by the DOR, and nobody knows what it is yet, but it will be a beefed-up report that's going to be needed to be, that's going to be provided to the county, to the technical college and to the school district. The, start with maybe some misconceptions, because everybody thinks they know a lot about TIF. Starting with that, TIF and TID, what is it? They're all the same or is it the same? TIF is a tax increment financing, which is the program, and a TID is an individual TID that you have, that you work under. So a couple of the misconceptions in regards to the history, the TIF program was established in 1975, and we're, we're proud to report that we did the first district in the state at Ellers. I was not around, I may look old, but I'm not that old, to do that. It's really a tool, as you know, to promote development and redevelopment. It's really the only tool in the state of Wisconsin that's, that has the power that it does to actually allow for redevelopment to occur and to spur different development. There's a lot of different TIFs out there. There's, there's BLIT, there's rehab, there's ER TIDS, there's industrial TIDS, there's mixed-use TIDS. They all come with their own sets of rules and timelines, so I didn't want to go through all that with you. Just know that each one has their own set of rules, including duration, expenditure, et cetera. Since the inception of the program, there's been 1,800 TIDS created, a little over that now, and 770 have been dissolved. And some had to be dissolved because they were created back in the 70s and 80s and they've hit their maximum life, so a lot of them have been dissolved. And, and for the most part, the average life is not on there. It's about 16 years statewide for a tax increment district. That's increasing each year a little bit. And then I, we will provide a summary ultimately to staff that can be shared with you on the TID law changes. There were 15 changes that were proposed. Five have really been as of yesterday. Four have been shelved, one probably will be shelved. A couple of them were really important, I thought, to municipalities. One was allowing any type of district to share revenue with another type of district. Right now, the only districts that can share revenue are industrial districts that can share to, I'm sorry, the only districts that can receive are BLIT districts. What was proposed was any district can share revenue with any district. That got shelved and is not moving forward. The other was moving the TIF statutory 12% threshold, meaning the amount of value you can have in a TIF from 12% to 15%, which would have allowed other communities that may have been TIF'd out to actually create additional districts. So those are two that were very important that fell by the wayside. Misconceptions also, tax rate differential, doesn't matter if you're in a TIF or not in a TIF, the tax rate is, is the same. It's what happens with the revenue once the district's revenue has been collected and how it gets dispersed. Corporate welfare, we can all debate that all we want. And then finally, impact in other taxing jurisdictions, what's true and what's not true. What you hear is that other districts are hurt, and that may be the case a little bit when it comes to county and it comes to technical college, where if you think about the scope and size of the tax base for both of them, an individual TID is pretty miniscule in their budget. But with school districts, it's a, it's a complicated formula that is a school funding formula that has to do with the amount of value that a, a school district has and also the number of pupils that it's serving. And they are really held harmless through TIF. So when a TIF closes, the value goes up and the state aids can drop to the equal amount. So they're pretty much held harmless through this. So a little bit about your use. As you know, you've been pretty active in the TIF world over the last number of years. You have really nine TIFs, eight are active, one will be closed. TID number nine is not active. All the TIDS were either created in 2000 and 2001, so you were really busy at that point. You got a lot of, a lot of proposals and you had a lot of TIF districts that were created. Just as a comparison, I didn't know who to exactly pick. That compares to five active TIFs in Plover, six TIDS in Wopon, eight in Ripon, 10 in Manasha, just kind of give you an idea. You know, you're probably a tad on the high side for your size community, but you know, I would say five, six, seven is pretty normal. City is currently at 16% of the TID capacity based on current 12% test, meaning all that really means is you can't create any new districts and you can't amend the boundaries of any existing districts to add territory. You can amend bound, you can amend TIF districts, but just the projects within the current boundaries. So you have some restrictions on what you can do going forward at this, at this point. The city currently has no remaining capacity, as I just indicated. Currently, the city charges admin costs directly related to the TIDS, to the, to each individual tax increment district. And what, in our meetings, what the desire of the staff has been is to reduce the amount being charged to the TIDS. So in our cash flows, and if you go into the numbers, what you'll see is that we have identified a 10% annual reduction in the administrative costs being charged back to the tax increment districts. So what that does is two things. One, it helps the cash flow of each of the districts, but two, it kind of hurts your budget, the general budget, which we think will be offset essentially by the TIDS becoming healthier. So I think it can be a win-win as you go through this process. So initial observations, real quick, last bullet point here, due in part to the revenue sharing, donor amendments and distressing of TIDS, the city, TIDS are in decent financial position when you look forward and you look at them collectively. Yes, there are, I'll call them dogs that are out there. You have a couple that are highly underperforming, but you have a couple of really high-performing districts. And when you kind of equal it all out on a cumulative basis, and I'll show you that a little bit, you actually are in decent shape. I think 16, 17 will be a little bit of a challenge going forward yet, not much, depending on what you do with some of your debt issues. And then going forward after that, you will have positive cash flow in your collectively, in your tax increment districts, assuming again that you're not spending a lot of money, because all of this is kind of static that we look at going forward. We're not, a lot of expenditures being made in addition to what's there right now, and we're not really projecting any new development, so that will change the equations for each one of these districts going forward. So for our purposes, what we really use is kind of a static look at this, flat tax rate, no property appreciation or depreciation, and no development and no new public costs. The only ongoing costs are your existing obligations that are, are in place and that admin cost, which is being reduced at 10% a year. So I'll go through the, the TIF districts really pretty quickly here, because I don't want to spend a lot of time in each one. I don't, I'll be honest, I don't know where they all are. I don't know what they have for as far as a special name. That's why I have the experts here that can chime in if, if anybody has a question as to, okay, where is TID 3? I, I've heard about it all these years, but where is it? I don't have that information for you. So TID 3 was created in 2000, and it's an industrial district. It's been distressed and is a recipient district, meaning it gets revenue from other donor districts to help its payments. The increment is $11.6 million. The expenditure period ends in 2018, so you can't spend any additional dollars after April 2018 in that district. And the distressed life goes out to 2033. So our cash flows in the other packet, if you looked at TID 3, shows a scheduled 2027 close, seven years earlier than the maximum distress life, and that all negative cash flow will be paid back and the, the district will end up in the black, in part again due to the fact that it's getting revenue from other tax increment districts. So that's TID number three. You'll see the same format for each one of these. TID 4, it was created in 2000. It's a BLIT district. It's been a very successful district. It is a donor to TIDS 3, 5 and 8. This was a bit of a Rubik's Cube as we started going through and see who donates to who and who's a recipient, but we got there. Current increment is 24 million. Expenditure period ends at 22, April of 22. The TID life is 2027, and again, it has significant positive cash flow and is projected to close it early. How early will depend on how much revenue will get shared with 3, 5 and 8, because all of this will be dictated by the health of each one of these and the revenue sharing coming in. TID 5, created in 2000 as an industrial district. Again, it was distressed and is a recipient district, has minimal increment of $760,000. Expenditure period ends again in April of 2018. It goes out to 33, the maximum life goes to 33. And there's a negative cumulative and annual cash flow through the life of the TID without the revenue sharing. So it's a district that has been in distress probably since almost the beginning of the district being created. You can stop me at any point if you have questions or I'll keep going. Any questions so far?
I have one.
Yes?
For, for TIDS that have significant positive cash flow, why would you be advocating that we reduce the, our administrative costs to those 10%?
Well, what it'll do ultimately is it'll allow you to share more revenue with the districts that are, that have, are distressed and have a negative cash flow, so that the city doesn't have to advance funds to cover any shortfalls. So it, it's kind of a balancing act when you think about it. You have, you have this revenue, you have expenditures, and what you're trying to get to is make sure that they, they meet each other and that you don't have to advance funds to cover any shortfalls. I'll get to the final pages eventually. You'll see that you're going to have that crossover in 2017 where you're not going to have shortfall. So what's happening now, or what's been going on, is that you've been, the city has been advancing funds to the tax increment districts to cover shortfalls, in part due to just the cash flow in the districts, but also some of that admin costs that's being charged. So this is just kind of a way to kind of correct that over time. And the other reason we're looking to do that is you don't want to become dependent upon revenues from tax increment districts. When the districts close, that revenue goes away and you have a hole to plug in your budget. And we've seen that in communities and it can be significant. So we like to see the city kind of wean yourself off of that over time, so that when the districts do close out, that you don't have a hole in your budget that has to be filled. So it's for a couple of reasons.
Yeah, I think currently we charge $150,000 administrative costs to the TIDS a year.
And we're not talking about eliminating that. We're talking about, again, reducing that on an annual basis by about 10%. And that, that'll help the overall cash flow of the districts as well. And I think that'll, again, they'll net each other out to some extent, so it shouldn't cause a problem in your budget. TID 6, really quickly, is again created in 2000. It's a BLIT district. It's a healthy district, very healthy district. Donor TIDS, again, 3, 5 and 8. 3, 5 and 8, you'll see in here are, are kind of the dogs, the, the districts that, that struggled from a cash flow standpoint, has got 19 million in increment. Expenditure period ends at 22, max life is 27. And again, a significant positive cash flow. And again, when it closes out, will really be dependent upon how much revenue you share with 3, 5 and 8 from that district. TID 7 was created in 2001. It's a BLIT district, but yes, it's a donor to TIDS 3, 5 and 8. You have minimal increment valuation. There is a, a plant expansion that we have included as part of the cash flow. That would be the wrap-up. I think it was a 15 into 16 development, and so that's the remaining amount in 16. It has a positive cash flow and is projected early closure, depending on again, how much is shared with 3, 5 and 8. TID number 8 is an industrial district, distressed and a current recipient district. Current increment value is almost $3 million. Expenditure period ends in 19. 34 is the maximum life. And it's got a significant negative cumulative and annual cash flow in that district. So it's a, it's a district that has struggled as well. TID 9, there's nothing happening in that district. You have some positive, you have a negative increment value, but you have some positive revenue in that district. It's an interesting one. And what we're talking about is kind of an internal, while we're talking with Kathy, more of an internal item as far as trying to pull the, the revenue out of that and then close, close out that district. It's, I think, remind me, is it about 200,000 in, in revenue in that ballpark? Yeah. So I, I think that's a district, there's no reason to keep opening, may want to close out. And then finally, TID 10 is created in 2001 as a BLIT district. Again, it's got 3 million in, in increment value. Expenditure period is still 23, so it's got time to spend money there. TID life is 28 and has a positive cash flow and would be projected to close out early. The interesting thing is it's got a positive cash flow, but it's not a, a district that's currently sharing revenue. So this is one of the things you could do if you needed, is to, to amend TID 10 to be a donor district if you wanted to beef up the revenues going, the revenues available to share. So the biggest problem district as far as cash flow and advances has been TID 8. This gives you an idea of what's going on from an accounting standpoint. This came from your audit, and we again confirmed everything with Kathy. Fund balance of all TIDS, really, I should say fund balance at four, essentially TID 8. That's what I should have said, TID 8. It's a negative $7.4 million. So there's been a significant contribution to this district over time. There's an advance to other funds of 6.6 million, and there is a due to other funds of 872,000. There's also a payable, the payable, when you look at it, it's really been water and sewer that have advanced the funds primarily, and then TID 4. I don't know why, we haven't quite figured out why it was identified as a due to other funds as opposed to just an advance for TID 4, but that's how it was stated in the audit. Looked a little bit odd to us. May want to have a discussion with the auditor about reclassifying that, I think is what we talked about. But really, it's the water and sewer that have been supporting primarily TID number 8. So the goal obviously is try to get money back to water and sewer and help out those utilities. In addition to that, and this is another item for your auditor, you have a cumulative transferred from debt service fund of $1.4 million. So what that is, is over time, you have advanced money from the general fund to help support the district. And so the footnote in the audit states that the transfer from debt service fund isn't expected to be recovered, and we look at it and say it can be in time. We think it can be. So again, that's an audit item that I think you should take a look at. If you have the ability to recoup $1.5 million almost, why not? And even though it's stated as not expected to be recovered, the TIF districts, we, again, we, I think the analysis shows that you have the ability to recoup that. It'll take time, but you have the ability to recoup that. Any questions on TID 8? Everybody know where TID 8 is? I'm not quizzing, I'm just, okay. Financial summary for all TIDS, again, from your audit. So you have a cumulative fund balance of a negative $6.4 million. You have a cumulative transfer from debt service fund of 3.1 million, and you have a combined of $9.5 million. Essentially, I'll call it just a cumulative shortfall that's built up over the years in the tax increment districts. Again, that's coming from your water, coming from the sewer primarily, and then it's also coming from your debt service fund. And so the goal when we started this all along was, well, let's look at this to see, is there a way for the city to ultimately recoup all that? Because. Because when it comes down to it, it's a lot of money. And that money can be beneficial to the water and to the sewer utility. It can certainly be beneficial to the other tax increment districts. And hopefully you get to a point where you can reimburse the general fund as well to help build up reserves. That's, you know, we do a lot of rating calls with Moody's and S&amp;P. And, uh, in talking to Kathy about the situation here, fund balance is an issue. And, uh, if you have the ability to increase your fund balance, that'll allow you the ability to go back into the market and hopefully see an upgrade in, in your, uh, in your rating, uh, as well. So the goal along here is really about 9.5 million shortfall and whether or not that can be recouped over time. So I've touched on a lot of these already. Uh, but I always have to identify and make sure everybody understands exactly what was in the cash flow assumptions for each of these districts because I don't want somebody to go, yeah, but you said, here, th- these are the assumptions. Flat tax rate, meaning we're not showing rates moving up and down, no property appreciation or depreciation. A lot of times in TIF project plans, you'll see, uh, property appreciation. People are expecting it to increase at two, three, four, or five percent a year. And that, what that does is really increases the revenue in the district and can create kind of a falsehood about how much revenue will be there to pay obligations. We show none. Uh, no development except in TID number seven, which is that plant. Uh, no additional TID expenditures. Uh, and a little footnote, I don't mind if there's TID expenditures, that's, that's your prerogative, but just wanna make sure that the future increment will pay that off, uh, going forward. Uh, continued payment of existing development, development incentives. You have a series of development incentives that are hanging out there. And, uh, we built all of that into the cash flows, knowing that there are obligations that you have out there. Uh, again, 10% reduction in admin costs. And then keeping the donor TIDS four, five, four, six, and seven open to offset shortfalls in three, five, and eight. So those are the assumptions. I really went into each of those individual cash flows, uh, that are part of that other, the other handout that you got, um, prior to this presentation. So one of the things that are out there that, uh, we brought, uh, to Kathy's attention that I know, uh, has been brought to her attention previously is that you have a series of CDA issues. I think there's four. CDA issues outstanding, uh, CDA is Community Development Authority, and there are lease revenue bonds for TIF projects. All of those we see as being targets to be refinanced. Uh, I think there is a tentative plan to refinance those with the state trust fund, uh, at least the discussion. So in our cash flow, we've built in those being refinanced because, um, we, I think that's a, that's a significant, um, element to what, to making this work. It frees up, uh, frees up the reserve fund and, and there's a real benefit, uh, by, by refinancing those issues. Um, that will make a big difference when it comes to cash flow going forward. So you'll see a line in that cumulative sheet, and I'll go through it in a little bit. And that line will show the, um, uh, the, um, the refunding occurring. Henry?
Um, just to further explain, on CDA issues, the way those are structured, you have to set up, it's one year's debt payment basically?
Yeah, it's, it's
Sort of off to the side?
One-year PNI essentially. It was a three-prong test, but yeah. So it sits in a, in a fund earning right now maybe 0.02% or whatever. And you're paying probably 4% on it, so every year it's out there, you're kind of losing, you're losing money. But that's the standard, how they're set up. So let me just get to, uh, really the meat of this.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, absolutely.
Um, I was following you all the way until we got to page 13, and then your 13 doesn't agree with the 13 that's in our packet.
Oh, yes, I, I'm, did they not get put in the?
No, it didn't. They put the old one.
Okay, I apologize. Uh, I, uh, was it yesterday? I think it was yesterday, I, I had to make a few updates to this. And so the handout, um, this on the screen is the more updated version. I didn't know if it got here in time or not, so I apologize.
Okay, cause I was, I had a question on 13.
Yep, well, this is the new 13.
Yeah, well, okay, so it just changes everything, so that's
It does change it a little bit, yes.
Okay.
So again, I, I'm not diving into all the numbers tonight, but giving you kind of the big picture, uh, view here. And keep in mind that you had that number that's kind of hanging out there, roughly $9 million shortfall. And the cash flow, when you look at it, with all the revenue sharing that's available without any new development, uh, shows that in 16 and 17, again, assuming the refinancing of the CDA debt with the state trust fund, uh, you should have a, a revenues in excess of expenses of about $420,000. So that's the first bit, bit of good news. It's not a huge amount of money, but you're starting to turn the corner, uh, in 16 and 17 where you're starting to see, you know, some of the debt payments drop off. That's a big part of it. You've paid off a lot of debt, a lot of that's falling off, and now you have more revenue than expenses. And with the revenue sharings that, that's out there, you actually are not contributing, finally, to your tax increment districts either from the water or sewer, or from the general fund through the debt service fund. It's actually gonna cash flow, 16 and 17. So that's the first bit of good news. It gets much better after 17. Again, a lot of the debt's starting to fall off. And starting in 2018 through 25, it averages about 1.1 million dollars or a total of 8.8 million dollars uh, that will be funds in excess of expenses. Now, that assumes no new expenditures in the tax increment districts that aren't being covered by new revenues. But if you hold everything static as it is today, uh, by 2025, you will essentially have paid back that full $9 million advance. Again, in part due to the revenue sharing and also in part due to the fact that a lot of the debt is really dropping off in a lot of these districts. That's if you keep the donor districts open and in place. So that's great news. Uh, I think it's, um, it'll allow, it'll allow you a lot more flexibility in the future from the standpoint of finance, financial flexibility, allow you to build up your fund balance, which you should be doing. The only thing it will not do for you is give you flexibility when it comes to tax increment districts in the future or amendments. So I'll touch on that a little bit. So the overall picture, again, uh, the city could have the full amount of the fund balance and the transferred debt service. Remember the transferred debt service funds were identified as not essentially identified in the audit? You know, not expected to be reimbursed. I think they certainly could be, uh, by 2026, so
Let me ask a question.
Yes?
When did, when did that change? We had always set those up as payables. So I don't understand why
They're still out there as payables.
Okay.
They're still on the books as payables, although there is a note
Yep.
in the financial statements because of the way the TIFs are out there and the fact that there is $9 million out there and that there's no, uh, new development coming to the distressed TIDS, that the auditors are making that statement that the, the likelihood of it being paid back is
That's coming from our auditors?
That's coming from our auditors, that's making, they're making that of, that assumptions.
I think it's between, it, there's a few items, and we've talked about it, that will need to be just discussed with the audit. Uh, and some of the changes made going forward, especially in light of kind of where you are. And I think the fact that you're turning this corner, uh, there certainly is that, that prospect. So I've taken a lot of your time, I'll just go to summarize real quick. Um, and then I'd be happy to answer any questions. Uh, parallel cost capital and budgeting, uh, process, we really think there's merit to this where you're looking at TID capital evaluated under the same criteria as general capital projects. Um, and make sure that the TID capital borrowing fits within the city's, uh, policy regarding borrowing capacity, which I know you have a policy on borrowing capacity. Uh, annual staff reports, again, I touched on that already, that you're gonna have to beef up what's sent to the other taxing jurisdictions. Again, ta- allocation of admin costs, uh, so you start weaning yourself, uh, off of that from a budget standpoint so you don't get caught when districts close. Uh, reimbursement of fund, uh, balance. Uh, I, again, um, we get pretty conservative on this stuff. Develop a policy as to the repayment of excess TID increment to the current payables. I think you really need to have a policy in place and not just, hey, we got this money, let's do. I think you have to have a policy that says, we need to beef up our fund balance. We need, you know, the, we need, some of it has to go back to the water and sewer. I think you have to have a well-thought-out plan as this money starts coming back in as to how the money, where it gets allocated and how it gets used. Um, and then, uh, potential actions of existing TIDS, uh, close TID nine, no reason to keep it open. Certainly could amend TID 10 to become a future donor if you want. Uh, I don't think it's needed right now, but if some situation where you had a significant drop in valuation in one of the donor districts and also, and, you know, the things really changed, you certainly have the ability, uh, to tap into TID 10 as a, a future donor. And, and one of the things that we talked about with Brennan, and, and I didn't include an option in here, you know, one of the problems you're in right now, um, is that you don't have the ability to, to really react to new development unless it's in existing districts. So one of the things to weigh and think about is whether or not you, you close TID six, uh, in the future. TID six is big enough, uh, where TID six actually will, uh, drop you below that 12% threshold that I talked about. So you could amend or create new districts, you may not, not have a desire, but you never know what's coming, what development could be there. That will, if you close that district, it's a donor, it will change the cash flows and how fast you're getting reimbursed back and as from the page before. But it's something to keep in mind. If a development happens, you certainly have the ability to react to it, but it's gonna require closing one of the, one of the successful districts, which kind of changes the whole formula. So, uh, really quickly, I want you to, uh, the document that was handed out that says supplemental financial information, I'm gonna have you turn to the second page, the first two pages. Again, for those of you that love numbers, you can go, take this home tonight. Be asleep in minutes. Uh, if you look at page one, page one is really simple. It just looks at the revenues, which lead to the green column, the expenses lead to the yellow column, your annual and your cumulative numbers, okay? And this only looks at the fund balance in each districts, but it does not take into account the advance from the, from the fu- from the, uh, general fund balance, that $3 million. So you have a negative balance of, of starting balance of 6.4 million dollars. And you can see it's actually not in terrible shape. If you go to the next page, this is where we build in the state trust fund loan. And again, I don't have this up on the screen. And it, there's a lot of detail on here. It took us a long time to kind of sort through all of this, uh, because you have so many districts that are to, due to and recipients and donors. Uh, this, if you go to the very far right-hand side of the pages, the year, then the cumulative with refunding, advances, and transfers. And it shows the fund balance where you are going forward each year and by that 2026, the payoff. The column bef- the two, the column two before that where it says total with refunding, that's actually cash flow. That's the positive cash flow that would be available. The nuance here that will have to be looked into further is that state trust fund loan. We have it all being benef- benefiting you in one year. Or in actuality, you may wanna have it benefit you in 16 and 17, cause after that, I think you're in great shape. So we'll have to, there'll be a little nuance with that. But, you know, again, I think it's actually a, a positive story. We're not gonna look back at history, we're just gonna go forward and say it's, I think you've, uh, you're starting in a new, a new, uh, a new, um, birth of, of financial, uh, hopefully, um, health with the city going forward, starting really in 16 and 17, and then getting better year, each year after that. Uh, due again to a great deal to the, uh, a lot of the debt being paid off, uh, in those districts. So with that, uh, maybe the presentation was longer than expected? I came a long way, I gotta talk, you know? Uh, questions? We'll have a final report that ultimately gets, uh, sent and, uh, to everybody with the TID law changes summarized, et cetera, as well. But this is a lot of the base information.
Uh, Phil, uh, you know, TIF eight, uh, probably some background. TIF three, five, and eight, we call them the East Gateway TIDS. And if you guys remember, we had the bypass project and the runway expansion. And we allocated the cost of those projects proportionally to both, all three of those districts. So they all kind of are absorbing that cost. I don't know what the number is, but it might be 40 million of value that we need in TIF eight to have that cash flow, and we're like at 10% of that.
That's about right, yeah.
It's, it's really challenged. Um, I'm sure you have other clients that have made big investments in TIF. They haven't been as successful as they wanted, uh, or projected. And now you're faced with, we've got a great opportunity to keep most of our TIDS open for another 10 years, get all that money back.
Yep.
Is, do you see some clients, some cities make the judgment that we'll, we'll capture 50 cents on the dollar of what we advanced, uh, to get those TIFs, to close them and give them opportunities and to move on? Or because we have the opportunity to really pay ourselves back, stay open that extra five years?
Uh, it's all over the board, as you would guess. Uh, you know, what we saw were a lot of very healthy districts, a lot of districts that were achieving the stated, uh, development assumptions until '08, '09, '10. And if you had big investments that occurred prior to that, you got caught in the real estate bubble and, uh, really no action for a number of years. And so you're not that dissimilar, maybe a little bit bigger numbers because of that one project. You talked about the East Gate project. But most, I would say, Henry, the vast majority, uh, of communities that we deal with will keep it open as long as possible to be able to recoup as much as they can. I mean, I, you know, I, I don't see a, a lot of benefit except for maybe if you're TIF'd out and you have the ability to, uh, get underneath that 12% to deal with a large project. I don't see a lot of benefit to closing it out early.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions, comments? What's our next step then? Phil, Kathy, Henry, where, where do we go from here?
Well, for the definite first step would be to refinance those CDA lease revenue bonds. Only because they're at 4%
Yeah.
and we can, we can definitely get the reserve to free up that cash right away. And, um, and the fact that all of the, um, like TIF four, there's a lot of debt that's just been paid off on that. Um, and just go from there in, and that's even the same, you know, one of those is the Hendrickson Center. And that's already included in the 2016 budget to do that. So I think that's, that's the biggest thing is to just get that first step with the state trust fund loan. And then the next one is to, to look at, um, the possibility of, of making a plan to start paying back the general fund and the water and sewer funds based on increments that are coming in from the donating TIDS. And especially since, um, TIF four and TIF six are really good. You know, maybe, um, that allocation is just a little bit more to, to be able to pay down and reimburse the city back. And then at least on our balance sheet then, we'll look really good for fund balance. We'll have that cash that, you know, that they gave back for the other TIFs. So I think, um, that's the, that's one of them. And then, then going forward is to start planning, uh, a budget to start showing that we are reducing the TIF increment, um, allocation to the general fund, um, on a 10% basis. Uh, so that over the life of the TIDS, we'll, we're, we'll be at, um, a point where we aren't relying on that, that extra money to supplement our operations. And, um, make sure all our capital planning, um, includes the TIDS if, if necessary. So I think that's, that's one of, you know, it's a lot of steps, but I think that's where we start giving council more financial reporting back on, you know, including the TIDS as part of our whole budget process so that you can see this is where the TIDS cash flows are as of this year. Uh, and, and going forward, what we're planning on expensing out of those TIDS.
You talked about the bu- you just talked about a budget for our TIFs, and, and Phil, you brought that up too. Um, we're, uh, when you say that, are you talking about the, all the TIFs combined or each one of those TIFs?
Each one of those TIFs would have a budget.
Yep, each one.
Okay.
So you would see, uh, in the budget document what their increment is, is anticipated to be and what their expenses are. So you'll see their debt service and the fact that their increment is not making it and that, that there's the transfer coming in from the other TIDS and the other TIDS showing that transfer out.
Um, and I know we have talked about this quite a bit, but you keep talking about the administrative charges. charges and I understand they're reducing it so that we wean ourselves, but we also have to make sure that the city is getting paid for the work that we're doing within those tiffs.
I completely agree.
Yeah, I mean.
Yeah, you have costs. You have, you know, it's part of your audit costs, you have attorney costs, you have staff time costs. I think a lot of that should be charged. I'm not saying you should eliminate by any means some admin costs being charged to the tiffs. I think it just should be weaned a little bit from where you are. I don't disagree with that.
All right. And one more question I have. When you talked about closing up tiff nine, there's some positive money in there, not necessarily cash flow, but there's cash in there that could be used somewhere else. Are there any disadvantages to closing tiff nine?
Unless there's a development potential in that area, I just don't know. I don't, what we heard is really.
It's a very limited tid as far as what's available there. That was the buyer's guide.
Yeah, there was a pending project and that, after we created it, that fell away.
So the fact that we can't admit, and because of where we are in the percentage, we can't amend that tid to do anything and expand it. So the best thing is to just close it.
Yep.
And obviously, while you're doing it flat, I guess I have one more comment, question. While you're doing it completely flat, if we do get some development in there, which we've had some interest lately, that's only going to improve our cash flow.
Absolutely. Yep. I'm not, I'm not here advocating you don't do, you should pursue development, absolutely. And that will help the cash flow and it'll help the payback quicker. Just want to make sure that each project cash flows individually so that, you know, if you have a 10-year payback, a development, and you know the district's all going to be out there for another 10 years, you want to make sure it pays back in that 10-year period.
Any other comments, questions? Thank you, Phil.
Thank you.
Very informative. I appreciate it. Looking forward to working with you some more.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, let's move on. We have something else? What's that? Oh, we're going to go right to seven. Let's do this real quick. We have ordinance that we're going to read for the first time. Jerry Lyons is here and we don't want to make him go and come back, so let's, and it is just the first reading actually. So let's go to letter G. This is the rezoning of the property. It's the O2 Group LLC, which Jerry Lyons and Ben Lyons are members of that LLC and they're requesting rezoning of the property at 715 Hill Street. This is the first reading of that ordinance. City planning has had the opportunity to take a look at that. We had a public hearing at planning. Can you touch on that real quick there, Brennan, for us?
Sure. I'll just briefly go over. It's actually a two-part series, so you guys had the public hearing. The comprehensive plan that was on there as well, although we're not discussing that, does have to be changed as well as the property or the long-term plan identifies it as commercial. So we need to change it back to residential. And secondarily, the rezone, I believe it was back in 2012, was actually the property's originally rezoned to business because that was the use out there. But recently, we've had a request to change it back to residential because there's an adjacent landowner that's looking to purchase the property and use it as a residential use. So that's why you have the amendment to the comprehensive plan and the rezone petition as well.
Okay. So the first reading is actually right now, well, the second reading at the first meeting in March. Let me also just point out real quick that there were a number, probably all the neighbors, and they were all in favor.
Did not have any negative comments for it, so.
It makes, that really does make sense. Eric, you were there and Alan, so it did seem to make sense to all the neighbors. Okay, so that was the first reading. We'll vote on this at our next meeting, which is March, the first Tuesday in March. All right? And I guess we're going to move on and we're going to go to, we set up a meeting at a closed session that was to start at seven o'clock, so we're going to have to jump to number 11. And I'm going to ask that we have a motion to convene into closed session, but before we start that, I, staff members that, you don't have to be here for this closed session if you do not want to. You certainly can stay if you want to. If you have an item that we still have to work on, you'll have to come back if you decide to step out, okay? It's some very sensitive information that we're going to talk about, so if you feel that you can't keep the confidentiality, then we do ask that you leave, no matter who you are, so appreciate that. So at this time then, we would take a motion to convene into closed session. We have a motion by Hagan, second by Hackett, that we convene into closed session in accordance with 19.85 Section 1, Pren 1, Pren E of the Wisconsin statutes as it pertains to deliberating or negotiating the sale of public property in the business and technology park in accordance with 19.85 Pren 1, Pren G, Wisconsin statutes as it pertains to conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or it is likely to become involved. Most of all, any discussion on that? If not, Sandy will take role.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Lori Chestnut.
Aye.
Steve Hackett.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Scott Perchatsky.
Aye.
Chuck Whitman.
Aye.
Alan Keeland.
Aye.
And Paul Neal.
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
Angie, I don't, what can we say for time, you guys? How long do you think this will take?
Half hour.
I would say.
Twenty minutes.
About half hour.
Okay, so about an hour. 7:46 PM. We're going to move on. We skipped around a little bit, but we're under number nine and this would be letter B. And this has to do with, we'll pack online, talking about additional bandwidth upgrade. Josh around here?
Yeah. He'll go get him.
He said he'd be here in about 30 seconds.
Okay. So as soon as Josh gets back here.
There he is.
There he is.
I think as you recall, late last spring, you approved a new two-year contract with Charter. We were out of our initial contract and they were trying to get us back into a deal. And we entered a two-year deal for 80 meg service at $1,700 a month and that's the current deal we're in. We predicted sometime this spring, we'd probably need to increase the speed and we figured, why pay for more than save some money? And we're at a point where we've hit capacity of the bandwidth we've had. I'm talking with staff. I asked them, what do you think is the ideal amount to go after for speed, workers for the next year or two? And they said, you know, go see what it would cost to double what we're at. So I asked Charter for price quotes on 150 meg, which is nearly doubling the 80 we're at right now. And we went back and forth a bit and that's in my memo in your packet, but the deal we reached for new two-year contracts, that new two-year contract would replace the current contract we have, 150 meg service for $2,100 a month. And in my memo, there's a price comparison. Our initial deal with Charter, we were paying a little over $25 per meg. Our current deal, we're at $1,875 per meg and this new contract actually has us down to $12.13 per meg. So we've been seeing a nice price drop with each new agreement we've entered. So just looking for approval to get this contract signed and move forward with the upgrade. Any questions?
Josh, if we find in another nine months or a year that we need to go to say like 300, is this, can we do the same thing as we're doing now? Just go back to them and say, hey, we need more?
One of the nice things with Charter, you know, concurrently how they're structured, we can go to them anytime and basically start a new contract replacing what we have. Obviously, they prefer better terms than where we're at. So we, you know, if we went to them and said, hey, we want to downgrade, you know, they might not, you know, they might want a longer deal or something to replace where we're at. But yeah, that's exactly what we're doing right now. We're going mid-contract, hey, we need more speed. And then usually, hopefully, an advantage is it's at their then-current pricing. So our initial contract isn't dictating it, so hopefully pricing keeps dropping when we go back. Hopefully, it's an even better deal than what we're getting right now.
Josh, and is the main reason for doing this is to increase the bandwidth of our current customers or to help us get more?
Well, there's a couple things. Right now, we're hitting the ceiling. We need to get more speed ASAP. That's the biggest thing. Secondary result, we're about, we're close to two-thirds through the grant project, which is upgrading the entire network, which gets a lot more capacity through. Our customers are getting better connections, they can access more speed. So that's part of it. Our customers are utilizing more speed. We've got charts, you know, showing the past few months, we keep going up. And then we've started offering a new business class service, so we want to make sure we're ramped up and really able to provide good service for that too. So our demand's going up. And one of the things we changed last year was how our income was distributed in the budget. We've got a bandwidth fee on the bill and we split that out and, you know, the past few months, we've been averaging $2,02100 a month. So the money we're bringing in from that bandwidth fee about equals what we pay each month for our bandwidth. So hopefully, as more customers increase their speed, we're bringing in more bandwidth money.
Sure, sure. What do you think?
I'd move for approval.
Motion by Neal, second by Olson, that we approve of entering into a two-year contract with Charter Communications for the city's bandwidth upgrade at a cost not to exceed $2,100 for a month.
I do have a question. In the memo, it says the two-year contract is $2,400 and the three-year is $2,100. So is this a three-year?
That was kind of explaining the backstory, how we got to the pricing. So the initial deal she threw at me was $2,400 a month for the 150. So we went back and forth and we got it down.
Okay.
So we got better pricing than what we started with when I started negotiating with Charter.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Sandy will call a roll.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Chuck Whitman.
Aye.
Paul Neal.
Aye.
Steve Hackett.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Lori Chestnut.
Aye.
Alan Keeland.
Aye.
Scott Perchatsky.
Aye.
And Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
Thanks.
Thank you, Josh. Thanks for the explanation. Okay, the next three items that we have on here are requests from our Public Works Director, Justin.
Thank you, Mayor Smith. The very first one is requesting authorization to hire a part-time employee in our water department. The memo can be seen on page 166 of your packet. I guess without going in too much details, it should be noted though that I feel that an extra guy is needed this summer. We've gotten a little behind on some of the work, not because of guys being lazy, but we've had a lot of issues with our meters. We had a new meter reader ordered recently and that has really helped. I mean, it was taking Scott roughly a week and a half to read the city when he needed to. Now we're back down to about two days. So for a while there, just because of our old reader that was getting us behind, some of our older meters were just going to junk, acting up. So we had to lost a lot of time just replacing. And also with the DNR and the recent survey said that we need to get back on the ball about exercising our water valves. So combining all that, we decided that we need an extra guy for this summer. When we do exercise the valves, we can kind of split up into two groups with the help of a guy from the street department and, you know, tackle this valve exercising and anything else that may come up. So came up with a general idea, a plan to hire somebody from the months of April to October, an average of 24 hours a week, which equals out to 720 hours. Kind of looked at the pay, minimum wage at 725, didn't, felt that that was good enough compensation for the type of work we needed. It's going to be very labor-intensive, somebody we can count on day in, day out. So I was looking at doing a starting wage at $9.25. So that total cost to our water utility would be $6,660. So just doing the double checking with Tina Dennis and also Kathy in the office about benefits and everything, it seems like that's a pretty good, $720, 24 hours a week would be a good spot so that we're not exceeding any thresholds, paying any unwanted benefits. So that's what we're looking for this summer. So requesting the action to authorize hiring a part-time employee for our water department.
Okay, anybody have any questions of Justin?
Justin, you got April to October. This looks like a job that might fall in for college students and such. Not time, there's a couple of months on each end that might not fit in. Are you thinking more someone way older than that or are you thinking college? Or it depends. I don't know who you're actually. My son actually, you know, did these jobs, you know, back in the day when they hired summer help, but.
Well, typically with the street department, parking wreck, that's what they target.
Yeah.
This one, the April to October is just based on the valve exercising plan we came up with. We needed, we want to do this during good weather, temper, or weather months because oftentimes what happens when you exercise valves, you haven't done it in a while, they can lead to break or leak or cause problems. So we need to do it during the good weather so that if something does happen, we can clean it up, replace it and not have a huge mess on our hands. So that's the whole reason to do, to shoot for the April to October. So I guess I wasn't targeting a certain demographic.
Okay. All right.
Anybody like to make a motion?
I'd move for approval.
Second. A motion by Neal, second by Keeland, that we approve of the water department hiring a part-time employee to help with the meter change and valve exercising program. This would be a part-time limited term employee, which would make $9.25 an hour and the hours, total hours would be $720 at a total cost to the water department of $6,660. Any discussion? Sandy will call a roll.
Paul Neal.
Aye.
Steve Hackett.
Aye.
Alan Keeland.
Aye.
Lori Chestnut.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Chuck Whitman.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
And Scott Perchatsky.
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
Okay. Want to do the tower cleaning then?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. Talked about this project and the next one I'll talk about during the last council meeting. This is our water tower cleaning inspection. So in January, just kind of discussed that it was based on a maintenance schedule and we got the proposals back expecting a range of $15,000 to $25,000 for the bids. As you can see on the list there, this is just on page 167, we received the following four bids, $14,100 from Water Tower Cleaning Coat of Lodi, Wisconsin was the low and it is $9,000 lower than the second one. So I looked into their references and their credentials and basically references were all happy. One included a DNR person, others were municipalities. And looking at what they proposed, their scope and their credentials, everything meets what we need. And they also did the work in 2011 for us. So with that, I'm just requesting the action to recommend Water Tower Cleaning Coat for the water tower cleaning inspection project.
A lot of water. Motion, anybody?
Move.
Second.
Motion by Peterson, second by Whitman, that we approve the awarding of the 2016 Water Tower Cleaning and Inspection Project to Water Tone Cleaning Coat Incorporated out of Lodi, Wisconsin for the amount not to exceed $14,100. Wisconsin, for the amount not to exceed $14,100. Any discussion? Sandy will call or roll.
Steve Hackett.
Aye.
Lori Chestnut.
Aye.
Scott Pritchatsky.
Aye.
Paul Neal.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Alan Keeland.
Aye.
And Chuck Whitman.
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
Go ahead.
So, the next one is further down, because I had some attachments on the previous one. Page 173, this is for the well rehab project. Again, maintenance schedule project, this is on a 10-year. And as I mentioned before, we're expecting bids in the range of 35,000 to 55,000. And as you can see from the list, again, we were under what we expected, which is great. So, Lane Christensen Company came in as the lowest. Now, the numbers that are shown on here are the baseline price. That's for the work that we know is going to be needed. Additional costs may be incurred after repairs or replacement parts after they do the inspection, take it apart, and televise. So, that could be upwards of $10,000. So, with this action, I'm recommending that the council award this project to Lane Christensen, but for an amount not to exceed $40,000. That was the amount that we had budgeted for this project. And, well, the budget was approved already, so. And just had included documents behind it was the bid opening sheet. It was a sealed bid.
Justin, the additional amount, if there's repairs or improvements that need to be made, would they be made by the same company?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay.
How it works is, obviously, they get there, they mobilize, and they take our well apart, inspect everything, then televise the actual well casing itself. Then, they present a results and findings and recommendations to me, and then I have to approve that or make, you know, recommendations the other way.
Okay. I guess I forgot to say that, just like the other two projects right just before this, these are all being funded out of our, our enterprise fund, the water fund. So, these are not out of the general fund, the water fund.
I got a question. You know, they said rehab, so all they do is run a camera down them? Or do they do anything else to the pipes or the point or anything?
Yeah, they, they take apart the well that's above ground, you know, so that's the motor and all the piping that's in the wellhouse. They take all that apart, rehab it, basically, if it needs to be refinished, replace it if it needs to. And then, yeah, the well itself, they televise. And then, there's several treatment options you can do. There's an acid treatment, a physical treatment, and then, there's like a third treatment that's, they can basically supply specifications if there's some kind of new technology. Typically, the acid treatment is what is used, and it's basically just dump a bunch of chemicals down it and just clean the interior of the gunk and grime. Then, you flush it and neutralize it again, and then, basically, take samples of your water before you put it back online, and then, put everything back together, and away you go. So, it's a lot of the piping, it's also the motor, and a lot of the pump underneath underground as well.
So, instead, just, yeah, it's the pumping and the well casings and everything, and it's not just the well pipe?
Okay. Any other questions?
Um, well, I'm hoping... Yeah. Well, just looking at last year's, or not last year's, the previous project, I think, came out to be about $34,000. So, I'm expecting another 10 grand, so. And it all depends on what they find.
Okay. Anybody else? We don't have a motion yet.
I move that we authorize the award for an amount not to exceed $40,000.
Motion by Keeland, second by Hagan, that we approve of the awards for the 2015 well number two, well number four rehabilitation project to, I'm sorry, it went past, there already now, Lane.
Lane Christensen.
Okay. Lane Christensen Company out of Schofield, Wisconsin, for an amount not to exceed $40,000. Any discussion?
Mayor, I think if something is found that pushes that number over, the staff would be back to, you know, get authorization for the additional funding.
Sure. Okay. Any other discussion? Sandy will call or roll.
Chuck Whitman.
Aye.
Eric Olson. Scott Pritchatsky.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Steve Hackett.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Alan Keeland.
Aye.
Paul Neal.
Aye.
And Lori Chestnut.
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
All right. Thanks, Justin. Next, we have, this is an ordinance change also, and this has to do with our comprehensive plan, and it also deals with 715 Hill Street. Brendan, you have anything to add to what we had already talked about there? Okay, everybody understands what's happening there? They're going from a, they're going to a residential property versus, it was a commercial property before that. So, this is the first reading of that ordinance. We will vote on that at our first meeting in March. We took care of the letter G, the rezone, at an earlier time. So, that brings us to another ordinance. And again, this is an ordinance, the first reading of this, so we obviously will have a discussion on this tonight. But we will, again, be voting on this at a future meeting, which, again, will be the first meeting in, in March. But this has to do with chickens allowed in our one and our two districts with requirements. And Brendan, you want to explain what we're doing here?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor, members of council. If many of you remember, we brought this forward last year, seeking guidance from the common council regarding the raising of chickens within the community. We've had some issues, you know, violations out in the community. There's been some difference of opinions in the past about what's allowed, what's not allowed, and, but I brought this to council last year, seeking guidance on how many chickens, or I guess, the first question is whether or not you guys would permit or want chickens within the residential area. And then, secondarily, an amount of chickens that would, you guys felt would be comfortable to be permitted on the property. So, Lindsay, at the time that she was acting as my intern for the department, did a thorough investigation of other chicken ordinances within the state and communities surrounding us and across Wisconsin, and drafted the ordinance that's in front of you for consideration this evening. I do want to address, I guess, the concerns that Mr. Whitman brought up regarding the $50 fee, and then, the annual $20 fee. That was found across all ordinances. You know, the $50, the $50 upfront fee is really to recoup some of the staff time for the process of paperwork, the application that has to come in, the site visits that we're going to actually have to take to make sure that it conforms to the regulations. It's not just my department, but also our building inspection side of it and taking a look at it, making sure they didn't meet setbacks. And the conditions are met as for the type of coop and everything that can be on the property. And then, very similar to, you know, the annual license for cats and dogs, that would be an annual fee of $20. And again, that would, you know, basically, cover our cost to go out to the property and inspect that it's in conformance to what was approved from prior years. Secondarily, as it relates to the neighboring properties, that was also found in basically all ordinances that we reviewed. That's why we brought it forward as well. You know, it was a discussion point during the Plan Commission review into this ordinance, and we actually modified it to just account to the adjacent property owners. You know, originally, we're looking at a distance or, you know, looking at property owners across the street, but we modified the ordinance to just require that it would approval from the adjacent landowners that would be affected by having the chickens in the backyard was another one of the issues. And then, when this was brought forward to Plan Commission, the ordinance that is in front of you this evening was actually what was approved by the Plan Commission with, I guess, added language. If you look under number three, letter B, it talks about the outdoor slaughtering of chickens in residential districts is prohibited. Originally, staff had proposed language that the slaughtering of chickens would not be allowed to occur at all on the property. But there was some lengthy discussion during the Plan Commission meeting that the slaughtering would be okay in an enclosed or indoor environment. And the language that is presented to you was, I guess, a compromise about not allowing the slaughtering on the outdoor perspective. Staff has mixed reviews on that. We went back and took a look at all the other ordinances that we utilized on crafting this ordinance, and there are no ordinances that allow slaughtering at all on the property. So, I think that's an item of discussion that we would like to, the council to address as well. Otherwise, again, everything else that's in here is what was found in other ordinances in our research, one crafting and presenting this for consideration this evening.
Okay. Again, this is the first reading of that. If we have some comments that you would like to talk about at this time, that'd be great, but we are not entertaining a motion at this time. Steve?
I've been contacted by at least one person, and this person does not want me to tell who the name is. But this person is complaining to me because some neighbor has chickens, and one of them is a rooster. And she is not very happy about the rooster. But I see there was no roosters allowed in.
This ordinance would actually prohibit the keeping of roosters on the property. And, you know, honestly, any of the chickens that are currently out on people's properties are actually not conforming or illegal to the current ordinances. So, that is one of the reasons that this ordinance is being brought forward to everyone is to try to bring those properties in conformance. I would say that, you know, that, we understand that it's going to take some time for this to be enacted, so it's not going to be just a snapshot come April 1st, it's got to be done. We're looking at having this fully implemented by the end of the year, you know? So, give people time and the opportunity to meet with me and meet with my staff and making sure that if they want to continue to have chickens on their property, that they conform to the ordinance.
What do you do now if they have a rooster? Because this person definitely doesn't want to be known in the community.
If they have a rooster, then my department needs to investigate it and would have to provide a citation. I mean, technically, right now, I could cite anybody that has a chicken on their property. I haven't done that.
And she's not concerned about the chickens, it was only the rooster?
I mean, and I have received other complaints in the past about roosters, and have addressed those as much as, as possible right now that we can. But we're kind of in a gray area, I would say, with that at the moment. I think a letter written from my department addressing at least the rooster aspect of it and having that removed from the property would be applicable at this time.
I will let this person know.
I will need an address, though, in order to send a letter.
She hasn't given me that, so I'm not even going to... As far as the fees, I see nothing wrong with the fees at all. I, if people want to have chickens in their backyard, the fees seem reasonable to me.
Any other comments? Again, you know, this is obviously on TV tonight, and it's been published in the newspaper, right? So, that all that works, right? No? We post it?
After the ordinance passes, we publish it.
Oh, okay. But we did have a public hearing on this, so we've had opportunities for people to discuss this, but they might discuss this with you since this becomes...
The notice was published. The notice of the public hearing was published.
Okay. All right. So, go ahead, Paul.
Under number K, about no enclosure shall be, excuse me, letter K, located close to 25 feet to any residential structure. If you have, if you have a home in the center of the city that wants to have chickens, that's going to be kind of difficult to have something that's right in almost the center of their property. I mean, you can have a shed within three feet of a line.
Right, but that, I don't, I mean, a shed and a chicken coop are two completely different types of structures and uses on the property. Again, I think trying to minimize it adjacent to homes or anything else on the property would be a better fit for the area, truthfully.
Some, some properties aren't even, you know, much larger than 50, 75 feet, and, you know, so that 25 foot is going to be rather cumbersome.
Yep.
It's a residential area, you know? Chickens can be raised in agricultural areas. The ordinance permits that. I say it's not always appropriate to raise chickens on any given residential property.
Okay, any other comments about the proposed ordinance?
Brendan, did you compare it to cities of like size? Brendan, I'm sorry, Brendan.
Yeah, I mean, there's, I mean, there's a lot of different examples. I don't have specifically in front of me right now, but I mean, there, you know, we looked at similar-sized communities, but we also looked at ones out of Milwaukee, Madison, and honestly, they're all the same at the end of the day. I mean, the language is basically pretty similar. And again, we did, we did craft it in a sense to take into consideration the size of our community and everything else. But if you look across the board, you know, all the ordinances are generally all the same. Actually, we condensed ours down a bit to minimize the verbiage and wordage in here.
Anybody else's comments on this ordinance before we move on? Okay, let's move on then to letter I, which is the agreement, Wopac Taxi Cab Agreement with Veterans Home.
This is, starts on page 191 of the packet. Again, this is an annual kind of administrative task. The, probably the highlight of the agreement, it's a one-year term. We charge the vet's home $8,000 a quarter, $32,000 a year for the service, plus $3,000 for administrative cost. This agreement is essentially exactly the same as what we had in 2015. We did tweak the hours a little bit. If you remember, when we put in our grant back in October, we did change hours slightly, and this agreement reflects all that. So, I'd be asking for approval of the agreement.
Move for approval.
Second?
Motion by mail, second by Hackett, that we approve of the one-year agreement or the extended taxi service between Wopac and the Wisconsin Veterans Home. Any discussion? Sandy will call or roll.
Paul Hagan.
Stayed.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Lori Chestnut.
Aye.
Chuck Whitman.
Aye.
Alan Keeland.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Chuck Whitman. I said Chuck Whitman. Paul Neal.
Aye.
Sorry. Steve Hackett.
Aye.
Eight ayes, one abstention, and one absent. Motion carried.
All right. Thank you. Next, we have the Main Street Project and the STP that we were awarded. Henry, you want to?
Yep, sure. Get us going. I'm sorry, Scott didn't get called.
You didn't call me on that vote. I don't know if that's...
I didn't. Sorry.
That's all right.
I gave you twice. Sorry.
Okay, this is Chicago.
Scott Pritchatsky.
Aye.
Thank you, thank you.
This next item begins on page 207. This is what's called a state municipal agreement. As you know, we were successful in getting some federal dollars allocated for the downtown reconstruction project. Again, all the... Again, all the discussion about whether to accept those funds, you know, need to occur, you know, in the near future. But on the advice of some DOT officials, they suggested we go ahead and enter in to this agreement, and this is just for design services, because one of the first things we got to do is begin working up the case for exceptions, right? Because this federal dollar's sort of the fallback position is there's some things for safety and circulation that would likely require us to get rid of our angle parking, and we know that that's a big decision that's got to be made. So one of the things we've got to do is begin that process of talking about exceptions, looking at safety data and accident data and that kind of thing. And what the DOT does is they don't do this work. They hire contractual firms to kind of work on their behalf. And what this agreement does is get that ball rolling, gets an agreement in place so they can start charging costs to this project, and this would be part of the overall project cost. We would see in a couple months, maybe three months, an agreement that would have the total construction cost in it. Because right now, they're working that all out in Madison, the projects that were approved, they've got to allocate the fund and get that all set up. So they knew that we were at a point in our process to, that we were close to awarding a contract for the design service or the master planning and design, and that disagreement kind of gets us, it gets us going. I did include, because she would be a lot more articulate about it than I am, on page 208, there's an email from Roxy Coppinger, kind of explaining kind of this whole process, and I won't read it to you, but that is the rationale for, you know, proceeding, and it explains, you know, how the agreement works. I don't know if you have any questions at this point?
Anybody have any questions, comments? I'm just rereading that memo again, too. So what we're doing here is we would be entering into an agreement. The contract is actually with the state of Wisconsin, although they hired that out, is that right?
It's just for design. This does not in any way obligate the city to the larger project. And if you remember, not that this would occur, but the option is with this funding, if for some reason we don't want to use it on Main Street, there's a couple other urban streets that we could use this money on. And so there's that option, too, in the future. You know, again, there's a lot of discussion that's got to happen about all that. But this is just for the design, for assuming the consultants get hired and you support that action, the consultants are going to want to start talking to DOT, because this is a very important element of that project, and this gets that process going so the DOT can begin to answer questions and begin to help guide us on the design of that project.
And we'll be paying 100% for the design?
Yes, included, if you'll see on the contract pages, Paul.
I'm just, yeah, I'm looking at-
Yeah, I'm trying to find the page in the-
Does any of it count towards our cost share?
No, because we decided, and again, and you saw my cover memo, most communities do not use STP urban funding for design. It's very complicated. You got to go through federal procurement processes to just engage your consultant. And it really mucks things up, if you will. It adds months to the process, a couple, you know, three, four months. And so most communities do that design in-house, and that's how we've budgeted it from day one, if you remember, when we pursued this, we put in the application that we would be self-funding the design. So this is 100% our cost.
So this is the $58,000 in our budget for 2016. Where did that money come from? Or where is that money coming from?
Well, that's, that's part of the budgeted, budgeted funds. Well, no, excuse me, that's not, that's for our consultant. These will all be wrapped up into the final budget for the project, and we're going to have a cost share on construction, and we're going to have a design cost. And that all gets factored in on the bottom, and that total dollar is what our STP money will be.
We have to pay this upfront, though. It's $58,000. Is that right?
No. It gets taken down to the bottom line, and it's included in the bottom line costs. So when we bring the next project agreement forward for construction, it'll show construction, it'll show state paying 80%, and we'll be responsible for 20%. And then it'll show this design cost of 58,000, and that's going to be 100% our cost. And then there'll be a bottom line number, and then you'll be deciding at that point to proceed forward with the construction.
Okay. So if we don't accept the STP program, we're going to pay that $58,000 either way?
Or I would, and I think staff would recommend, or we'll look into figuring out a way to you like, we don't want potentially this funding to go away. We find another way to spend it, and maybe find another project. Because you do have that ability to apply it to another project.
Understood.
Do you know what streets are qualified as urban streets besides Main Street?
I think I can. Give me a second. I'm going to have a math.
School Street. School Street does-
Is it Evans? I think you have one.
Evans Street, because it goes between Coney Highway and the highway, yeah.
Evans Street, really?
Which would be a nice street. I thought, I can't remember if Granite-
Berlin. Washington Street?
To name a few.
So there's ample projects that we, if for some reason something happens, that we'd be able to reallocate this to a good construction in our city, is what you're saying, bottom line?
Right. Right, exactly.
Yeah, question on this, Henry. It says it goes from Badger to Granite Street, so does that mean that little piece in front of the park there is not going to get redone again?
Uh, that's-
Or from Granite Street to the bridge? Is that piece going to get left out of this?
That is not included in the cost estimate, so I guess as we work on this project, maybe council wants to extend that work. No, it is, it is not in the cost estimate.
Yeah, that was in pretty bad shape.
That little piece gets forgotten quite a bit.
It is planned to be looked at in the actual 30% plan, so we may have to go back to the DOT, but as part of our later agenda item, that is planned to be looked at basically up to the bridge.
Although that's a different street, too, so maybe that's just-
Local money.
Yeah.
Local money.
But, you know, that keeps getting forgot all the time there, so if it did get a patch on it, that's pretty nice.
And it's holding up.
Okay, so far.
I like, I don't care for the stripes that you got.
Yeah. Right.
You got you going all over the road, but it works.
Anything else, Chuck, that you want to count? No, I'm just kidding.
Just don't drive on it. It looks like somebody might have been drinking when they're putting the stripes down, so.
Hope it works, not me.
If I may comment, the limits for DOT, that doesn't necessarily mean that that's the hard-line project limit, so just because it says Badger Street doesn't mean we have to stop right as soon as we get to the crossing, the crosswalk right by Simpsons there. A lot of times, the actual project limits can be extended, so it's just kind of a description, a quick description to kind of figure out where in the world this project is, so it doesn't mean we're going to leave out that little piece. We can re-stripe it, you know, at that time.
Okay. So what we're looking for, Henry, then, is an approval to enter an agreement with the state of Wisconsin for the state design review services at an amount of $58,000.
So move?
Second.
A motion by Hackett, second by Whitman. You heard the motion? Any further discussion? Sandy will call a roll.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Scott Pachatsky.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Steve Hackett.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Alan Keeland.
Aye.
Lori Chestnut.
Aye.
And Chuck Whitman.
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
License report number 1303, this is Taxi Cab Drivers. Those names are on your page 214. We, again, would be looking for a motion.
Move to approve license number 1303.
Second.
Motion by Keeland, second by Chestnut, that we approve license report number 1303. This is the Taxi Cab Driver's License Report. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Against? Motion carried. Next, we have on page 215, we have the license report for Class V intoxicated liquor license and Class V fermented malt beverage license.
I do have a question on this, this one and 1305. There are two different names, subtle difference, but one is the Chain Links Pub and Grill, and the other was Chain Links Bar and Grill, and I don't know, I assume they're the same entity.
They are the same, and we will make sure that that's corrected. Thank you. This is a transfer, if you will, for the Country Club. They've got a different vendor in there, so that, yes, we'll correct that. Thank you. Think Links is correct, but don't hold me there.
Well, and they're using an LLC in 1304, so I would assume that they would want to use an LLC in 1305.
Well, Henry, their trade name, their application is Chain Links Pub and Grill.
Pub and Grill, okay.
Right, but the agreement is still going to be between the LLC.
Right.
Both of those will be. And they're just doing business as. So we'll make the assumption that those are the same, 1304 and 1305, and Henry, you'll make sure.
Yes, sir.
If it's different, you'll let us know. So as long as we talked about 1304 and 1305, you okay with voting on both of those?
Sure.
We got to make the motions first, though, don't we?
We certainly do.
I'll make the motion that we approve both of them.
Second.
Motion by Keeland, second by Whitman, that we approve license report 1304 and 1305. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. 1306, this is an operator's license report.
I make the motion we approve.
Motion by Hackett. Second by Peterson, that we approve license report number 1306. This is an operator's license report. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. Okay, we're on to the update that we have on the downtown vision and development plan and market analysis, and I'll turn it over to Brendan.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. I will try to keep this as brief as possible, but we wanted to take a two-step approach here and kind of inform the council where we are as of this afternoon or this evening, and then hopefully bring forward the preferred consultants to the March 1 council meeting for hopefully consideration and approval of their contracts. Last year, as everyone is aware, you know, we approved the downtown vision plan that was prepared by the city in East Central Wisconsin. We received approval to seek qualification bids for preparation of a downtown vision redevelopment plan, along with market studies as well. There are actually two separate RFPs that were sent out around October of last year, and it's been a pretty extensive process that we've gone through in reviewing of both proposals. You know, both proposals did have to follow, or at least the downtown visionary redevelopment plan had to follow requirements by the state, so we did a quality-based selection process for that. And that review panel is identified in the memo, which starts on 218. Eric Olson, myself, Henry, Justin Behrens, Lindsay, Kevin Nance, Terry Schultz, and Eric Fall, we're on the review panel. We received 10 proposals for that project. We narrowed it down to five based upon a quality-based selection process. There was a selection criteria that went along with it. And then in January, we held interviews on January 11th and January 12th of the top five preferred consultants, and took some time after that, we narrowed it down to two consultants, that was RDG out of Iowa and SEH out of Appleton. And we went back to both of them to get some clarification on their proposals and also some of their budget numbers at that time. And going through that scenario, as a review panel and committee, we came back forward and at that time was recommending that we recommend RDG to the council for consideration of and preparation of the downtown vision and redevelopment plan. Now, as I mentioned as well, we also had a separate market study RFP that was sent out as well, and we anticipated, and at least I had hoped, that we would have a partnership or a team that would be preparing both studies at the same time. The market study is, it's an all-encompassing citywide market study, but there was also a component that was included in there for the downtown portion of it. So the top five proposals that we reviewed all came with a team partnership. They had their preferred vendor or consultant for the market study piece of it. So as you move along into the memo, just wanted to kind of give you guys an update on where we are today and answer any questions that may be. But the market study, which was actually approved in the budget in 2015 and was moved over to 2016, is being funded out of the city's tax increment districts. That is at a cost of $25,000, which is going to be split evenly among all the TIDS. Again, that's going to be a citywide market study that's really going to take a look at, you know, give us a snapshot of, you know, what our market area is, our market growth potential, what sectors are we not providing right now, where do we need to make some more efforts in. And then, again, they're also going to be working with our preferred consultant, RDG, for the downtown master plan and vision plan as well. And that cost, as you guys can see, within your packet, comes at a cost of about $152,000. That includes, that breakdown is basically right around $80,000 for the downtown vision redevelopment plan, with the remaining funds towards 30% engineering plans. You know, as I identified in previous memos and reports to council, I had always anticipated that the planning phase of this project would be $80,000 to $100,000. And, you know, the engineering costs were unknown at that time, based upon what, bringing Justin on board and looking at what we really need from the STP standpoint, and working with all the consultants, the cost, as you can see, is a little bit higher than probably what we anticipated early on, but what we wanted to bring forward this evening is how we plan on funding this project. If everyone remembers, previously, we did have a couple grants that we applied for. We did receive about a $17,000 grant from WEDC. We also received a $25,000 grant from the state, from the Community Development Block Grant Funding. We had originally allocated $50,000 within the 2015 budget for this project, $25,000 of borrowed funds, and then $25,000 allocated from the sewer water accounts. The $25,000 that was to be a borrowed funds was actually reallocated to the city's parking study. I'll be happy to know that that will be presented to you guys in April of this year upon completion of that project. So we did, you know, lose some of the original funding that we were planning to apply for this project, towards this. And discussing with Kathy on how to fund this project upfront, we have provided two options for consideration for you guys this evening. We are seeking about another $100,000 for this project to cover the additional costs for the planning phase of it, but also for the beginning steps or the 30% design plan. for the planning phase of it, but also for the beginning steps over the 30% design plans, and working towards our STP project that we have hopefully moving forward. So, the options that we have in front of you guys this evening are option one, which is to utilize, add another $100,000 to the 2016 trust fund loan that we still have not proceeded forward with. And I'll let Kathy get into a little bit more specifics on what that cost is to the city. Or, option two, within the 2016 budget, there was a new, newly created contingency account that could be utilized for this fund, or for this project, and that would require the council allocated $100,000 of that contingency fund to be transferred to the capital projects fund to support the additional funding for this project. We are recommending option one, which is the additional $100,000 added to the trust loan fund. I do want to just break down a little bit, too, you know, we have right now the total project cost of $167,000. We do have some, I'll say unforeseen costs, that we don't know yet what's going to occur. When we went out for the request for proposal, one of the key items that we also need to take care of is the basement surveys, or at least get a better understanding of what's underneath the sidewalks, how do the foundations look within these buildings in downtown, but also, but, and speaking with Justin, we originally were getting a number for that, but in speaking with Justin, to hopefully save some money for this project, I believe his department is gonna allocate the time to at least do the initial review of those foundations and the walls, but we are anticipating that there will be some follow-up inspection work that'll have to get done as part of the project, so we would like to carry about a $15,000 contingency fund with this project as well, with any allocation of that contingency being brought forward to council before we actually utilize those funds. So, I'll let Kathy speak a little bit on the money side of it when it comes to the trust loan fund.
The trust fund loan right now is anticipated to be $400,000 based on the 2016 budget, and by increasing the trust fund amount to even 500,000, the increase is about, based on the assessed rate, the assessed value of the city not changing at all, is about six cents of an increase for the 2016-17 tax year. One of the things that does happen is by doing the refinancing on the CDA lease revenue bond, that helps with us in having some savings. The other option of using the contingency fund is not my recommendation. Contingency funds are not good to continue to use for these one-time expenses, they're for emergencies, and this is a part of a capital projects fund expense for this, what would you say, capital, the start of doing Main Street. So, this would be capitalized, and I would rather see us use a fund where we can either refinance it when we do the full project, and be able to look at where we are at that time. But, the fact that using the $250,000 contingency in the general fund wasn't, was just an option to show you that there is cash available if you wanted to use it, but it would be a drawdown on fund balance in the general operating budget. So, my recommendation would be to increase the borrow, to go out and increase the borrow to 500,000. It also sets up the $15,000 contingency for the project, and it's anticipated right now to be about a six cent per thousand increase in the tax rate.
Can I ask one point, add one point, just to clarify? We have no really honed-in cost estimate, and that's one of the ideas of doing the 30% plans, cause then we can really kinda hone that in. All our pre-planning up to this point has a project of, you know, 3 to 3.5 million, and on a design contract, if you were just hiring a consultant right off the street to do a three-and-a-half million dollar project, what is it, 6, 7% of the cost, maybe?
More, closer to 10.
10, so probably 300,000 might be the design portion of the cost. So, 30% plans, I think Brennan was showing, is that about 80,000 of the cost is to get us to 30% plan, so that's kinda right in the bailiwick of what we would spend if it was just a standalone project. But, it gets us to a point where we can get a much firmer cost estimate for going forward.
My estimate with the six cents per thousand is that we would do a five-year trust fund loan. So, it's, I mean, it's an aggressive payback. The other option would be is to structure the trust fund loan to incorporate that $100,000 to be at the end of the bond, or the loan, and we could, you know, smooth it out. I mean, that's one of the things that's nice about the trust fund loan, we can set our debt payment schedule, how it fits in with our budget, and then that's, you know, what we base, what we get for an amortization schedule from the state. So, I think if you're willing to do that, we can structure it in based on the rates and anything else that's out there. Or make it longer, like I said. Five is, I'm just going on five because I think at that point, we don't wanna pull out our debt service longer than we have to, but if we have to delay it, we can do that.
Any questions? Again, this is for informational purposes only. At our next meeting, we will be discussing this, and you'll have the opportunity to vote on this at that time.
We, yeah, I mean, I think maybe the goal or hope from staff tonight would be, you know, if there is, I know it's new to you guys tonight, but we are bringing the consultants in from Iowa and from Illinois that night, so I just, you know, if you guys are comfortable with the numbers and everything else, just wanna make sure that, you know, we're on track for that. They will be making probably about a 15 or so-minute presentation to you guys on March 1st as well.
You okay? Yeah, it makes perfect sense, yeah. So, let's go ahead and move forward with that. We're not agreeing to anything here except to listen to these people, but are we okay with the concept that we want that if everything works out, that we would get this process moving? So, I'm seeing shakes ahead, yes, I haven't seen any no's, so I am trying to look around here. Again, this was for informational purposes only, so I know it would be difficult for you guys to, seeing it for the first time, to really make a decision on it, and that's why we spread it out over two different meetings, so you had that opportunity to sit and ponder. Okay? So, yes, invite them, please, Brennan.
No problem. I can definitely tell you that the consultants are eager to start, so it's, looking forward to that.
Good enough, thank you. We took care of the closed session already. We go to the communications and recommendations of the mayor. Josh Warner wanted me to make sure that I reminded you that you leave your laptops and your power cords on the desk here, and he'll pick them up right after the meeting, so we can update your computers to Windows 10. Some of you have already been updated to Windows 10, and of course, you wouldn't have to leave your computers then, if you have been. If you don't know, you probably haven't been updated, so leave it. Okay? Anything else for the good of the meeting? We have a motion to adjourn. I don't think I can make the motion, but... Do we? Thank you.
I'll second.
Motion by Hagan, second by Chestnut, that we adjourn to our next regularly scheduled meeting, which is Tuesday, March 1st, 2016, subject to call. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried, we're adjourned at 8:49 PM. Thanks, everybody, for attending and watching.